We want to welcome everybody to our commission meeting. If you'd stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, we welcome you. And our first item of business is approval of our minutes. And Commissioner Hope's, we have, first set is September 20th.
I saw no changes. I'll make a motion to approve if you don't have any changes.
I didn't have any in that one. I'll step down and second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next set was the October 4th commission meeting.
Again, I saw no changes and I'll make a motion to approve.
And I will step down and second that. And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Our next item is to open a public hearing regarding the exchange of property in Willow Creek Canyon with Blackhawk Coal Company for construction of emergency communications tower and possible motion to approve exchange of real property and the contract with Blackhawk Coal Company. So, why don't we give a little background, Barry, before we open the meeting or open the public hearing?
Commissioners, the location that we're talking about is in proposal of creating a communication site. This communication site would be housed just above the old Carbon Plant at the intersection of 191 and 6. That area is unique in that it would give us one location to cover both highways, 191 and 6. Currently, right now, there's spotty at best coverage for our radio communications for both the state and the county. They struggle quite frequently in those areas to get communications out to dispatch. This site would eliminate that, giving full coverage across both highways. As we looked into the project of what it would take to do this, we located some Carbon County property that's in the area. And we tried to do our best to keep the site within that property bounds. But due to the terrain of the canyons, to stay on our property, it wouldn't give us much better coverage than what we have now. Fortunately, to the northwest of our property, there's a ridge that we did a site survey on. We ran multiple tests from, and it was able to give the coverage that we need to do those canyons with. And so, as a partner with the state, they've agreed to help us construct that communication site in order to co-op, or co-locate in that site and give coverage to both the state and county units. We then went to Blackhawk Coal, as they are the owner of the ridge that served the best location for that communication, and came to an agreement with them in exchange for property. We would give up our properties that we have in that area in exchange to own the ridge that we need to be on in addition to all of the property that the road to the site would be located on. Is there any questions?
The other thing that I think, excuse me, that we should talk about is, you know, in an exchange like that, it is obviously more property than what we need. But the real critical thing is the access, is that...
Correct. So, in exchanging the property, the way we are doing it, we would retain full ownership of the road so we can do road maintenance without any issues. We can have access into the site without any issues and be able to maintain the site. The road shop would then help us establish a better road into that area. The value of this property for the county would serve a much greater purpose than the property that we currently own.
Talk about for just a minute too, again, for the record, why the state of Utah is interested in this so much? What options they are proposing if we don't go forward with this? And the cost associated to the county in regards to them putting in the tower?
Sure. If we're unable to make this proposal happen, the state would then have to go in and claim eminent domain upon this property and then resolve access issues. That, of course, would be tied up in legal courts and fees and whatnot and add additional cost to the taxpayer statewide. With this deal in mind, Carbon County would then own the land, which would then, the state has agreed to purchase the building and tower. And so, in exchange for those two, we would be in the building and tower space rent-free indefinitely. And likewise, we would allow the state to be on the property without charging them. It's a situation that we've worked well with the state in the past. We do a similar exchange in the Four Mile Hill location where we own the building and property and make trade there.
If the state takes over the property or condemns the property through that avenue, then does the county have to pay rent to the state for space in their building and using their tower?
Yes. And given the amount of space that the county will need in the facility, we've asked the state what it would cost us if it was 100% their site, what it would cost the county to rent space in there. And due to the amount of rack space and tower space that we would occupy, you're looking between $800 and $1,000 a month. So, it would quickly pay for itself in exchanging land and the county taxpayers paying for that leased space.
One of my concerns going into it was twofold. One, in regards to the value of the property. And I know that we've tried to establish that through an appraiser. And I know that they were hoping to have information back as far as that. Have we seen that at this point?
We did. And in fact, an hour ago, the appraiser delivered that to me. So, it was in the nick of time. We've had the property that the county currently owns and would like to dispose of. We've had that appraised by Johnson Appraisal. And he's arrived at a value of $500 an acre. The total acreage is 157.62 acres for a total value of $78,810.
$78,810?
One thing that would be important to make a matter of record is the Blackhawk property is not for sale. And they would not be willing to just sell the property to the county, but they would be willing to exchange it. So, that creates this opportunity for the county to exchange property.
That was part of that next question, is if we could buy what we needed, you know, to get up there. Not that that's always the smartest move, but, you know, could that be purchased?
And that avenue was looked at. And in negotiations with them, not only is their property not for sale, but they really have no interest in the property that we have other than it's to help benefit the furthering of public safety.
My other question, and it pertains to the other landowners. Obviously, we're going through this process because there are others that surround our property, including the United States Government, BLM, and also the Marcello Holdings. Do, how do we, or do we impact them as far as access to those properties? Because Blackhawk does own, obviously, more than any of us in those areas. But, you know, in all fairness, we need to have that made public also.
Sure. So, the two properties that are, yeah, basically two properties that we'll be giving up, it's what, it's known to be north of what's called Panther Canyon. The bottom of Panther Canyon is pretty much all private. It's not till you get up in the east end that you find a piece of BLM. Or, excuse me, Forest Service, not sure which. But there is one section of Panther Canyon, approximately 100 yards or so, that crosses the property that Carbon County would be disposing of. So, that would then fall upon Blackhawk property. The terrain is such that there is no vehicle access into the area from Panther Canyon. The north side of Panther Canyon is quite steep. I suppose an avid hunter could climb it in some areas.
As it stands now, all of the properties that the county own are landlocked by private properties and are not accessible by the public, is that correct?
Correct. Legally, not only can the public not access our properties, we can't either unless we go through...
Either Blackhawk or Marcello's.
Correct. We would have to either traverse Panther Canyon through Marcello's property and climb up the mountain or come in from 191 and come across Blackhawk's property and head south.
Jeremy, did you have anything else to add before we open public hearing?
I don't. Although it falls under the definition of a significant parcel, I think because it is such a big piece of property, it's still wise to hold the public hearing and see if there's any comments to take into consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll go ahead and open our public hearing at 4:45. And we'd invite anyone that would like to speak to this issue. If you'd come forward, state your name for the record, and we'd like to, you know, hear from you at this time.
Hello, I'm Kyle Davis. I have a significant history there in that area with Carbon Plant. And my in-laws are Marcello's, which own Marcello Holding. I think this deal is overkill. You're trading a significant amount of property to gain something that can be easily obtained through eminent domain. This deal has adverse effect on our property because the road, the Carbon County property dips down into our land. And there's a section of road that would then become Blackhawk Coal property. The way we look at it, for the record, the county needs a partial property that's approximately 50 by 50 for a tower. And they're trading almost $100,000 worth of property to accomplish that. And I do not see how it's in the public's best interest to trade that much land for gaining so little.
Kyle, let me ask you another couple of questions. With that piece that, where the road from Panther Canyon does go through that short section in Carbon County, you know, before, we've had a couple of conversations. But access into the other part of your holdings obviously goes through there and through Blackhawk. Is it gated at this point in time as far as, you know, accessibility for you, for the family holdings there?
Pacific Corp. has a gate at the corner when they're blocking the road because they do not want people going down there and doing illegal dumping and stuff. But we've used that road for, they've used that road for over 30 years. So, they have that prescriptive easement on that road. And Pacific Corp. also build them access into their property through the ash pile, so...
And so, that's on the lower end. But up into the property in this one piece that's proposed to exchange, where there's about, I guess it's 100 yards that goes across ours and then into Blackhawk. Is any of that gated? I mean, are you able to get access through that at this point in time? Has Blackhawk put a gate up or you or us or...
There's, Marcello's have a gate at the bottom of the Pacific Corp. ash pile.
Right.
And above there, there's no blockage on the road except currently the road is washed out.
On your property?
On our property.
If I remember right. So, part of the exchange, and the reason I ask those questions is, you know, you've brought up the point of the amount of land being exchanged so that we can have, you know, clear access and move forward. But I know that there's also that concern of accessibility into your property and other issues there. Can you talk a little bit about that and how you see that they would have access to your property? And I know you're very familiar with that area. So, I don't know if it's, like you said, the road's washed out, drivable, hikeable, you know, help us, help...
We started having problems last year when they created a cooperative wildlife management unit. There's a road that goes up on top called the Red Diamond Road. And they've been hiking off the top down into the property. They also killed a big elk in there last year and accessed the property without our permission. And the fish and game wouldn't go after them for trespassing. So, that's why we're taking a hard stand on it with them because we don't want them trespassing in on our property for commercial hunting.
So, and I know that, you know, really what you talked about is the size of the land and the trade there. But with the access into your property, with, well, I guess what I'm really asking is with or without that little piece of Carbon County on that one corner, are they still going to have access to you the same way or...
They would have access the same way they have in the past. There's ledges on that side of the property. Makes it very difficult to get down into. Actually, that whole canyon is very difficult to get into except from the bottom.
So, even with that piece gone, in the top part of it, it'd be very difficult? I guess it would make it easier to come down off the ledges? Is that what I'm hearing you say?
Well, what they're gonna do is they're gonna walk down from the top of the canyon. They're gonna go through the BLM property and they're gonna access their piece of property and be into ours for hunting. We don't want that.
So, but that, but this trade wouldn't change that because they could still do that same thing, right? Off from Red Diamond?
Yes. Other than it affects the piece, a piece of road right down in the middle of our property. It kind of jogs right down into the bottom of the canyon and it's gonna have an adverse effect on us.
So, would the only way for that to be cured, I mean, even into the future, is to gate that section? I mean, if Carbon County retained ownership of that by even being able to get in and gate that, would that keep them out?
No.
At that point? And I don't mean to turn that, your comments into that discussion about, you know, access and so forth. But just wanted to make sure that, you know, we were understanding that, you know, there's the parcels that are being exchanged. But there's also that private property accessibility that I think we all need to be sure that we're considerate of. Okay. I think that's my questions.
Do you have an easement? So, as it stands now, it looks like the road comes through your property up into the county property and then goes into Blackhawk and then back into your property?
There was, actually, it was, it was a coal company built that road 30-some years ago. And they've used that property uncontested since early 70s. So, it would become a prescriptive easement, not a written easement.
For both parties?
Just for Marcello Holdings. The coal company leased the property from Marcello's when they built the road into there.
And that's on the top end going...
Yeah, they leased the bottom property to gain access.
So, all the way up from the bottom, clear up, past the ash pile, up through the canyon, and then onto that top little piece? And it dead ends, again, goes through yours, the federal government's, and then back into Blackhawk?
And then it goes, there's a piece of it drops back down into Marcello Holdings property.
Yeah, this part right here. Okay. I think that gives us a better visual.
Can you, so does that road, it goes back into Blackhawk? And then it comes, makes a big loop and comes all the way back down into Marcello property?
That road is actually up on top of the mountain behind Helper. It goes along the top of the mountain, then it dips back down into Marcello's property.
Kyle, come here for just one minute if you would.
And do you have access to it a little bit?
Yeah. The road's washed out, so yeah, you know, since the class is...
Where is the road washed out at?
It's washed out. There's a spring up in here, just above where that Carbon County section, we maintain, but it's washed out now also.
Just in here?
Yes, it is. So, yeah, there's a spring right up in here.
Yes, flushes all the way down.
Without access to that spring, it's pretty detrimental to Marcello.
And that's on Blackhawk?
That's on Marcello. Spring's on Marcello's property.
Kyle, is there anything else you'd like to add for your record?
That's for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Very, very helpful, thanks. Anyone else that would like to speak to that exchange?
Name's Doug Carter Price. I'd like to ask to repeat the numbers there. I only heard one number. The gentleman brings up a good point. What is the value of what we're trading for what we're getting?
Do you have the total acreage per acre that we're trading across for these two properties?
I do not. If my memory serves me right, it's about a two to one acreage trade. So, we would be giving up 157 acres. And we would be getting, I believe, a little over 80 acres. And if I could address the comment about the eminent domain, if, in fact, it were to go that way and the state has to claim eminent domain to obtain the site, again, due to the amount that we would have to pay in rent to the state, after about seven or eight years, we would be, it would have paid for itself. So, after seven or eight years, we would then be paying out more money than what the value of the property is.
So, it appears, it appears then that it's about a two to one trade as far as the acreage goes. So, the other question then that you bring up, and maybe it's for Jeremy, is if the state wants the site and they could do eminent domain, can Carbon do, can Carbon County do eminent domain on that?
That'd be a legal question.
Yes, Carbon County could seek that by eminent domain. I don't see anything that would prevent the county from doing that. Although, as the county has experienced, eminent domain proceedings can be extremely expensive for the county.
Yeah, usually more so than the actual value of the land. And we could take whatever strip that we needed as far as access there.
Normally, that's what would be, like in Nine Mile, we only took the property that we needed to use.
And, yeah, you'd have to show that you needed it for public purpose.
What's that?
You'd have to show that you needed it for a public purpose and then you'd be able to take the section that was necessary for the public purpose. You wouldn't be able to go beyond that.
I was gonna say...
But we wouldn't be able to take the whole property. It would be just the road width and the communication site on top.
Yes.
And it would be considerably larger than a 50 by 50. The tower alone may take upwards of 50 by 50. It'll be 120-foot tower to cover that site and plus the size of the building. And there's a large chance that this site will be 100% solar. So, there will be a small solar field as there, due to the electricity cost.
The road getting up into there to be able to construct and make, the road is there for the most part. To be able to widen it out for accessibility into that property, normal right-of-way is 66 feet, 60 feet?
I couldn't answer that.
I believe normally we take 60 foot.
60 foot right-of-way? So, it'd be a 60-foot all the way up the road plus whatever you would take on top.
Correct.
Is the actual site, proposed site at this point in time, is it, would it currently be on one of these parcels that Carbon owns? Or would it actually be on the current Blackhawk property?
It'll be on Black, it'll be on what Blackhawk currently owns.
Currently owns. The other thing is, and I believe you did those surveying up there, but there's an old mine property that had some buildings. Is it, my understanding from the conversations was that that was in one of these pieces that would trade? So, we would actually be getting out of that mining property? Do we have any, are there any holdovers as far as liability, anything like that in such a trade? And I don't know if Jeremy would know that or if we need to do a little bit more research, but...
That's a good question. So, yes, there is a concrete structure on one of the properties that we anticipate to get rid of. We have visited that site and took photographs of it. The concrete structure is actually quite cool to see how it was constructed. There's old concrete there with railroad rails for roof supports. And there's some tailings of an old portal there on site as well. We would actually be giving up the site of the old portal. When I discussed that concern with Blackhawk, they had no issues with that because they own lots of old portals. And so, it would just be another one on their list.
Has it been reclaimed up there? I mean, it's not an open portal, obviously, from my understanding.
No, it's not an open portal. It has been reclaimed. There's been some work to go in and cave it in and close it off. So, there's miscellaneous leftover rail pieces and rubber ties and a few things like that.
Thank you. Any other comments? We'll go ahead and close this hearing at 5 o'clock. And I guess at this point in time, Commissioner Hope's, we, if we've got questions answered, we can take a look at the contract to exchange. I'm not sure I have all my questions answered at this point. But I don't know what your thoughts and feelings are.
In the agreement, and I didn't, I didn't find it, was there anything that, in the property that we would be giving up that would allow continuous access for the Marcello's through the Blackhawk property?
I did not see that in there, you know?
I don't believe so.
I don't know that that answers the question of the exchange of the property side, but it may answer the question as far as accessibility. Would there be any kind of, I mean, if it's prescriptive through Blackhawk, if we were able to retain some type of a right-of-way through there, does that help your access as far as those things go? You would? I guess, I guess my concern is that access. You know, it sounds to me like, from your description and what we've heard, that there's probably ample access into the other properties which can overflow into yours. But if for any reason you're locked out of your property, that is a concern as far as I'm, as far as I'm looking at that. So, that was one of the questions that I really had, having looked at the contract, was that I didn't see anything there that provided access, whether it was to the county because of the other parcel that we own up in here or through the current access from Panther Canyon.
Right. Are we still in public hearing?
No.
Okay. I guess we probably need to table this then for, until the next meeting, until we can make sure the language is in there for Marcello's access through at least. It doesn't solve any of the problems for the property that, for the road that goes through Blackhawk Coal already. But it would guarantee access through that, I mean, it's a 1,500 feet or it's not a very long section of road that goes through what is currently owned by the county. But then it goes into Blackhawk.
And then down here into, in fact, into Marcello.
And into a large section of Blackhawk.
Yeah. I would be amenable to that. I would, I would be amenable to that motion while we try to answer that accessibility questions. The other question I did have, um, I know that we've talked with, uh, I believe Barry is, and maybe attorneys have talked to, uh, Blackhawk, but I'm wondering about, you know, the, again, if there's a, a different amount of land that could be traded. Now that we've established a value, we have a little bit of a better idea as far as public value on what those lands are. And I know we've been waiting for, you know, appraisal information to come back, but I'd like to follow up on that one, too.
Okay. Um, I, I think for the county, this is a favorable exchange, and I'd like to see something happen. Um, but I, I don't want to hurt marshellows in, in the making of a deal. So I would like to have, I'll make a motion that we, uh, we include in our agreement with Blackhawk, um, uh, pub- a, a right-of-way for marshellows on at least the Carbon County portion that we're selling, or trading.
Would, would you also include Carbon County in that right-of-way, so if we need to get into this piece?
And Carbon County. I don't know if that can be done.
But we can ask the, the question?
Correct. Do you have questions to that?
No. So is the, the desired change then, would it be a, a public access through that Carbon County section, um, for the, for the county's use?
Well, I don't think the public can access it.
No. I, I think you...
Because it's all private property. If you want to come up and look at the map, it's all private property up to just one little section that the county owns that is landlocked by private property. We just don't want to hurt marshellows by selling this piece of property.
Okay.
And, and not allow them to get to the springs.
All right. I'll get with Christian and we'll look at that and see what we can do there.
Okay.
And if we could look at, you know, what our exchange rate is.
Okay.
I don't know if you would amend your motion to include that item also.
Yes, I'll amend my motion to include the exchange rate as well.
So we have a motion, uh, to table this to the next commission meeting, or something sooner if we schedule it appropriately. And that would be to look at the access across the current Carbon County piece, uh, looking for right-of-ways for the marshello holdings and also Carbon County, and then to also evaluate the exchange as far as acres for acres. So I'll step down and second that, and, uh, we'll go to work as far as getting this back on the agenda for this next meeting, or sooner if we can. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Okay, our next item is consideration and possible amendment to the CIB priority list. Michael?
Uh, my name is Michael Bryant. Uh, I'm the regional planner for the Association of Governments here in the, um, Carbon, Emery, Grant, and San Juan County areas. Um, what you have before you is to amend the capital improvements list as it currently stands to make significant dollar amount changes to two applications for Wellington City. Both of these app, or both of these projects were on the list prior. It's just a significant change that I thought it would be, um, a good idea to bring it before the commission to, to make that approval. Any questions on that?
Why don't you go ahead? There's, there's three, it looks like three Wellington City projects on there, Michael. Why don't you go ahead and talk about which ones they are and the, the amount of change, please?
So the first one is at the very top of your list there, and it's for sewer system improvements. And I don't have in front of me the, the old dollar amounts, but I believe it was somewhere in the realm of a two-million-dollar project. Uh, this change would put it into the seven-million-dollar range, so significantly larger.
So what we have down on here is a million seven. Would that be approximately?
So that's, that would probably be correct.
So, and how would they break that out as far as grants or loans or?
Um, they have, uh, listed potentially for a two-point-five-million-dollar grant from the Community Impact Board and a one-point-three-four-two-and-nine-hundred-and-eighteen dollars, uh, loan from the Community Impact Board, and then another three-point-five million that they anticipate getting from Department of Water Quality.
So three-point-five water quality, one-point-three-four in a loan, and the two-point-five million in grant. Okay. And are they working on resubmitting that paperwork, or have they already, to the CIB?
They, they have not submitted those as far as I'm concerned yet, so.
All right. And the second one?
The second one, it's the eighth one on your list there, uh, water system improvements. Um, and I, again, I don't have the dollar figures of the prior amount, but it was nearer to the two-million range, one-point-eight.
Three-point-four.
Okay, so three-point-four, and that one would change to seven-point-seven million dollars.
Same kind of breakout, or?
Uh, similar. It would be, they request a four-million-dollar grant from, uh, the Community Impact Board and one-point-nine, uh, million in loan from the Community Impact Board. They didn't stated amount, oh, they do hit stated amount for, uh, division of water, division of drinking water is one-point-seven-five million.
Same status as far as paperwork?
Correct.
I know it was further down the list, so, okay. I'm not sure that that's a, uh, item that we need to motion because it comes through the AOG. Jeremy, do we need to take any kind of a motion on those approval there? I mean, it's Wellington City. It's really more of an information item.
I think so. Do, do you know, Michael?
Um, typically, the county priority list is approved in a county commission meeting, and so I would recommend that, but I don't know what your actions, what you'd want to take.
I'll make a motion to approve the new CIB list with the new numbers.
I'll step down and second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, just in case we needed it, there you have it.
Um, if I could take one moment for, uh, something else. It's not on the agenda, but it was just informational purposes. I'd like to hand out these little, uh, brochures that talk about the programs at the Association of Governments, as well as answer any questions that anyone might have as to what our agency is or what programs we have, if, if that be all right.
Yeah, you bet. We can distribute them here or leave them, and they can certainly give you a holler or talk after if you'd like. I'm sure you have more of it in your office.
I do. I, I wasn't anticipating handing out a whole bunch, but, um, as you can see when you look in there, these are, um, the various programs that operate in our office with a brief summary of what they do. Um, I'm not the expert on each of these programs, but we do have contact information for the individuals that are. But mostly it's just to be brought to the awareness of, of the commission and, and the public of, of those programs, but I can try to answer any questions that anyone might have.
Is there a website that's probably?
Yes. Um, on the back, um, it's the same as it's been for the past twenty, thirty years, but the, the website's significantly been upgraded, much more easily navigable, um, but it's the same web address as it's been in the past.
Which according to this is S-E-U-A-L-G dot Utah dot gov. And that's probably a great place for people to start. I mean, they can stop by, you know, pick up a brochure, and even if you'd like to bring some more here, we would have those for public access too. But stop by your offices or go online and take a look at those, because there's, there's a lot of programs there.
Right.
Any questions, Commissioner?
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Michael. Our next item is a review and possible approval of a contract with turnkey corrections. We'll turn the time to Sheriff Wood.
Thank you, Commissioners. So turnkey corrections, I'll tell you a little bit about what it is. Um, Rob Allen from Turnkey Corrections met with me in my office, and it's a kiosk-based system. So basically, what they do is they put these little kiosks in each pod where we house inmates, and they'll have one out in the foyer that, that'll interact with them. But it'll, it'll take care of our inmate telephone system. It'll take care of our commissary system. It'll also do things like update them on jail policy and their, their handbook that they get when they're booked into jail. They can review all that stuff, help with the grievance process. It's kind of an amazing system because it's, it's a whole lot more than what we have right now as far as they can, they can email from it. They can send emails and receive emails. They can Skype if they have a, a legal call. They can actually Skype their attorney from it, and so it'll save the attorneys having to come in and out of the jails as much. Um, they can receive calls from, from family members and friends if they're allowed to, and it tracks everything. It tracks their commissary amounts. They're able to, to load that, uh, account from the web, so, so they can give their information to a family member and they can load money on their books. Or they can come into the, the kiosk in the lobby and feed it with money, and then they track all that for us. I like it. I think it's an opportunity for us to upgrade what we have now and possibly generate a little more revenue out of our jail situation. Um, it has everything from food commissary to MP3 players and radios and, uh, things that we just don't have right now. So I'm pretty excited about it. It doesn't cost us anything to start it up. They take their cut. Um, Christian reviewed the contract. I haven't seen the latest, but it sounds like they've bounced that back and forth, and it seems to be amenable, but Jeremy, Mike can comment?
Yeah, Christian reviewed the contract and sent back a handful of changes there. They responded with only one revision, and, uh, Sheriff and I talked about that, and also Justin has looked at that. We don't have any concerns with that change. It had to do with a percentage increase, uh, that can happen in a year. We wanted to cap that at two-and-a-half percent, and they wanted to just change that to say two-and-a-half percent across the board, but individual categories could go up to maybe five percent if they had an increased cost on food or something like that. And so, uh, I think that's appropriate, and I think Rita has the latest version. If not, I've printed that here, too.
And I think I read in there, if, if we decide at any time we don't want to be part of that anymore, they have a sixty-day clause to terminate the contract. Was I correct with that?
I think that is correct.
That's, that's what I read, but it seems like they're very easy to work with. The thing, one thing I liked about what they had to say was they have a, they're, they're not based out of Utah, but they have a warehouse in Utah. So they'll come down with commissary once or twice a week, whatever we desire, and everything's here. So if, if somebody orders something up until twenty-four hours from the delivery day, they can order things for commissary. So we've also found over the, the, uh, time I've been sheriff, it's, it's beneficial to have music, uh, options for these folks. So we've been buying MP3 players for people that might have a mental illness that'll be in our jail that'll help sue them. They can get all that and they can download songs to it for a fee, um, now through this program, so.
I, I don't see the sixty day, but I do see that it's a four-year contract with three successive one-year terms, you know, by the, by the parties agreeing to that.
The sixty days is only a sixty-day cure provision, so it would require a breach to terminate the agreement, so.
Okay.
If we, if we wanted to look at having an out like that, we'd probably have to take it back to them.
And that's something to consider.
Okay. Mr. Holt?
I have no questions. You have any more questions?
I don't.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll go ahead and step down and second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
So let's, let's move forward with that, with the corrections, okay?
That's great.
Our next item is consideration and possible approval of grant application for violence against women funding. Jeremy?
So Commissioners, uh, what this is, is we became aware that we may be able to obtain some grant funding, uh, for, um, training and prosecution of specific violence against women crimes. Those would include domestic violence, stalking, violation of protective orders, sexual assault cases, and dating violence cases. Um, we've not, uh, had this opportunity in the past, and we're not sure that, that it will work, but, uh, we thought it would be wise to make application for it. And I, I want to say thank you to the commission for, um, allowing us a little bit of help this last year. It's been able to, we've been able to get our head, head above water a little bit and explore opportunities like this, and so we're hoping that it will, uh, be fruitful for us. What we're doing is we're requesting that, um, it'll be a seventy-four thousand dollars total, just under seventy-four thousand, to twenty-five percent match. Currently in this budget year, you funded a hundred percent of it, and so it would be a significant cost savings if this works out. Um, and so that would fund the majority of Sean Bryant's time. He would be reviewing, um, those cases, making sure that we were implementing new policies to better serve victims of those kinds of crimes. In addition to that, he and I would work together to develop a, um, a training curriculum that we would work with all the local law enforcement agencies, um, to help them have some better investigation techniques and understand better what we would need from the prosecution standpoint. And then we would continue to coordinate those cases with the investigators, with, uh, the victim advocates from both the sheriff's office and from Price City Police Department, and our primary investigator on those cases. So I think it'll be a great thing. We're very, um, hopeful that it will, will work out. Um, and that was, uh, due earlier today, and so I had previously, uh, reviewed that with Commissioner Potter and obtained the signatures on it, so I'm just looking for ratification of that.
One other thing I think you should add from our discussion is that that twenty-five percent match is already your time. It's not an additional monies that the county would come up with.
Yes, the way I wrote that is that, uh, the match funds would be my salary and benefits, a portion of, uh, ten percent of my time, um, which that would account for the match. And so the remaining funds would be used for the training for Mr. Bryant's time, um, and for any supplies and things that we needed. And so, uh, again, I, I'm hopeful that it will work out. If it works out, uh, the way we've submitted it, I think it'll be a real benefit to the county.
So as we talk about the need for grants and expanding our opportunities, this, this would appear to be at least fifty thousand, if not a little bit more.
Yeah, it's about fifty-five that the, that the county would receive, so.
So I'll make a motion to ratify the signing of the grant application.
I'll step down and second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
It's quite lengthy, so if you want to read the whole thing, here you go.
Always with those grants, there's always a lot of, uh, hook, line, and sinkers with them, right? Our next item then is a proposal to increase taxes for the county assessing and collecting levy and the municipal services levy. Seth Overson?
Commissioners, we've, uh, we began the budgeting process. We received, um, information from the department heads on what their needs would be for the next year. Um, in anticipation of that, and with the timelines that the, the state puts on it for any proposed tax increase, um, we've put these, uh, the net, this item and the next three items on the agenda. Um, they're all tied in one, but state code says it has to be four separate, separate items, so that's how we've put it on the agenda. Um, so I, I'll speak to that.
Why don't we go ahead and read those four items in, and then we can have that discussion?
Okay.
So the next one was the proposed tax increase amount of four-hundred thousand to county assessing and collecting levy, and the second part of that would be two-million-one-hundred-and-twenty-one-thousand-nine-hundred in the municipal services levy. Next one is the pro- per- purpo- purpose of proposed tax increases is to provide existing services in the face of decreasing revenues within the county. And the last one, the fourth one in that item, is proposed tax increase percentage amount is approximately one, forty-five percent in assessing and collecting, and two, seven-hundred-and-seven-point-three-six percent in the municipal services levy. And I know that you're going to cover why those percentages are the amounts that they are based on what we currently collect.
Correct. Um, so the, the proposed tax increase, let's, we'll take the county assessing and collecting first. Um, that item, it says it's, it's four-hundred thousand. What the county assessing and collecting levy is for? What the county assessing and collecting levy is for is to cover the cost of assessing and collecting taxes, not just for the county, but for all taxing entities within the county. Back when they set up the property tax system, they needed an entity to, it was more cost-effective for one entity to track all of the values and property records and assign the tax rates and collect all of the tax and then distribute it to the entities. That was given to the counties, the twenty-nine counties. So when you're talking about the assessing and collecting levy, it'd be what would cover the assessor's office, recorder's office, the treasurer's office, part of the clerk auditor's office, which assigns the rates, part of the commission's office, because they cover the Board of Equalization, the appeals process for property taxes, a piece of the attorney's office, and a piece of our IT office who, well, they provide the guts for the system that tracks all of the above. When the county looks at the actual costs of assessing and collecting taxes for all of the taxing entities within the county, it's just a little over one point two million dollars, and that levy historically, it's about eight hundred thousand, is what we currently receive in revenue for that. So in the past, we've received either mineral royalty funds, mineral lease funds, and the county has been able to leave the tax rates lower and subsidize that with mineral monies. The way the economy's currently flowing with decreased funds and that, that is one of the costs, as we've looked at, the cost of doing the functions that we're required to do, and who's paying for that, that levy is available. And that's what that proposed increase is, is to be able to cover the cost of assessing and valuing all the properties, collecting the taxes. But it's the county assigned duty, but they do it for all of the districts, all of the districts, the cities, the county, the school district. That's the purpose of that levy. And it's forty-five percent, because right now it's approximately just a little over eight hundred thousand is what we generate, and it's a four hundred thousand dollar increase, that's how it comes to forty-five percent. That levy covers every single parcel in the county. So it would be a county-wide increase. And if anyone has questions afterwards that I stumbled through here, you're welcome to snag me afterwards and we can look at that. The other levy is the municipal services tax levy, two million one hundred twenty-one thousand nine hundred. That's the projection of what we would need to be able to take care of the municipal services fund. Municipal services fund covers the needs that would normally be covered by a city for the unincorporated areas of the county. So if you live outside of city limits, that is who this levy would apply to. It would cover roads, that's the biggest, one of the biggest items that's in the municipal services fund is the road shop, it has a three million dollar budget approximately to be able to maintain roads each, you know, every year. In that fund, currently the property tax levy is only three hundred thousand dollars. So for many years, as the county has had the benefit of receiving, again, those mineral lease dollars coming in or help from the Carbon Recreation Transportation Special Service District, as they have had the benefit of different funds flowing into them, they have passed those on to the county and we've been able to hold that tax levy very low in lieu of the current situation with, you know, decreased production and mineral production in the county, those royalties, those mineral royalty monies have decreased. And in order to be able to right-size that so that the people that are receiving those services are also paying for those services, that is that proposed increase. It brings that levy much closer in line, two point one million dollars, sounds like a, and it is, a lot of money. But it brings that levy much closer in line with where the other cities are, it would bring it very close, the target was to bring it in line with where Price City's levy is. The full two point one million dollars would bring it just over Price City's levy, but it would still be under what the municipal levy for Helper, Wellington, and East Carbon are. So it would bring the services for those being paid for. Those services include services that everybody in the county has, policing service, roads, the ambulance service, and that is, that's the situation where we're in looking at it this year in order to be able to provide funding for the services that we currently have. It's not to provide, you know, new buildings or new employees or anything, it's to provide a funding source, as the funding has gone down over the years, the county has kept those services up, eating into fund surplus a little bit, but it can only happen for so long, and that's why we're looking at this option. With the truth in taxation process, so the public can know, this meeting is to, the initial kickoff of this is what is going to happen. The county will have additional meetings to discuss the situation, what this would mean. Each property owner will receive with their tax notices, which they should be receiving in the next week, an additional insert in there with their tax notice, and it will say, "For your parcel valued at, whatever your parcel is valued at, your home, your business, whatever," and it will say, "This is your current value, this is what the current levy is, this is what the proposed new levy will be, and this is what the new tax will be." So you will know exactly the expected increase on those properties. And this is, you know, this is a worst-case scenario of what we project the county's need would be. It can be adopted after the public hearing, which will be November fourteenth at six PM here in this room. There will be that public hearing, and then in December when the county adopts its budget, its final budget and the tax rate, if we can figure out some other alternative way of providing for those services, the tax rate could be anywhere, the tax increase could be anywhere from zero up to the amount that we've specified here today. So that's the timeline. Notices will go out this next week, everyone should know what those are. We'll hold a public hearing in November fourteenth, and then the tax rates actually will be adopted in December. And then the commission would still have the alternative when the tax rates are set every year in June of next year, if something has changed between December, and then the tax commission will always give you the option of taking less than what was advertised, but not more. So that is the process in a nutshell, and the reason for the tax, proposed tax increase.
Just to make that announcement, one of the things, when Seth brought this to our attention, that Commissioner Hopez and I would like to do is to hold two open houses, one on November eighth from six till eight here in this building, in this room, and one on the thirteenth from six to eight at the fairgrounds in the event center, so that we can, excuse me, so that we can provide additional information other than this little bit of an overview that Seth has talked about in that process. And then, of course, the following day on the fourteenth would be a regular commission meeting day with that public hearing at six o'clock. And probably as a way to introduce that, I'm not one that even likes to have this conversation about having a tax increase, but we'd like to lower the screen and show you some information that we've initially been able to put together this week in regards to why this may be necessary, or if it's not, then we really need to seriously look at, as I've been indicating for this year, what are the programs and what are the personnel that we are willing to pay for and what are we not willing to pay for? So Commissioner Hopez, I guess we need to wait for that to warm up.
The, one thing that I might add, when property owners receive the notification, like as it says, a forty-five percent increase for the assessing and collecting levy, the code is designed specifically to draw attention to that, so it will say a forty-five percent increase. That is not a forty-five percent increase on your total tax bill. So if the assessing and collecting levy on your house was fifty dollars, and your total tax bill was seven hundred dollars for the year, it's a forty-five percent increase on the one levy. So that would go up from fifty dollars to seventy-five dollars, that would be your roughly fifty percent tax increase for that one-line item, but your taxes would go from seven hundred dollars to seven hundred and twenty-five dollars. It's, it has some shock value when you'll receive that notice, and I wish the state code would allow us to clarify that, but I think the legislators designed it to create that shock value so people would ask the questions, and anyone who gets that notice, hopefully they will call and ask what that is, especially when, not just assessing and collecting levy, but when you're talking about the municipal services levy and it says that seven hundred percent increase, it's, it is a huge number percentage-wise, but dollar amount-wise, you need to look at your individual parcel to see what those dollars are, and for some parcel it will be significant, so.
So was this set at the first slide then, Commissioner Hopez?
Was that, is this the first slide? And Barry, how do we move through the slides? I don't know how you have this set up, are we just on?
He's trying, I'm not controlling it, so.
So what we've done is we've pulled together some preliminary information on what's happening, where the revenues, where the decrease in revenues to the county have come from and why some of this proposed tax increase is necessary if we go down this road at all. If you go to the next slide. This shows, this slide, when we talk about centrally assessed properties, we're talking about properties that are assessed, not by our assessor's office here in the county, but those properties that are assessed by the state. Those properties include all businesses that cross county lines, so your telecom, your phone companies, your Rocky Mountain Power, Dominion Energy, which was Questar, the railroad, all of those types of properties, your gas companies are all assessed by the state. This is, all the taxes collected for all of the entities, so Price City, the school district, the county, all of those properties. And as you look at this, you'll notice that the amount that centrally assessed their value has gone down. The next slide will show you their value. This is just showing that the amount that they're paying is increasingly less. How does, what does that mean? For the rest of us, when the value of something goes down, the rate goes up, because what is stable is the amount that the county gets every year, or the school district, or whatever taxing entity it is to operate their budget. For the county, and I'll show this in a slide in just a minute, it's five million dollars. So when they pay less of that five million dollars, the rate goes up, everybody pays just a little bit more. Where are we at?
Just click.
Just click? All right. So this is the centrally assessed values, the market values. In two thousand eight, you can see that they had a high of one point four billion. In two thousand seventeen, two thousand sixteen, they're right around seven hundred million. So in a matter of nine years, we've lost half of the value centrally assessed, which has then shifted the rate, and everybody, that's why everybody says, "I'm paying more and more taxes every year," it's because the rate has gone up, not that any of the entities have increased the amount that they're receiving because of that.
Just click right there.
Did I?
No.
No, it didn't. Okay. So this is what the county received from centrally assessed. If you look at the high of two thousand eight, we were just over three million dollars that we received. That centrally assessed properties paid in property taxes of the five million dollars, so if you take into account that five million dollars, three million of that came from centrally assessed properties. If you go down to two thousand sixteen, they're about two million dollars. What does that mean? In that eight years, the rest of the property tax owners, our homes, our local businesses, have picked up that million dollars, and that's why the rate has changed. The rate has gone up so that everybody else is paying more. So that's where some of this money, that's why every year it seems like, well, the county's taxing us more, we're paying more, I'm paying more taxes. Yes, we are paying more taxes, but the county is not receiving any more than what has already been allocated year after year after year as far as operating budgets. This slide, purely and simple, is from two thousand seven to two thousand seventeen, which taxing entities receive what amounts of fund? The school district, as you can see, is the highest, the county is below them. Price City, and this is on the left-hand side of your column, Price City, that's the equivalent to the property tax fund. The county municipal service fund is the one that Seth was explaining before, that's the one that would receive the increase, and currently it's below what Price City is This is just, again, the distribution between the county and the other entities in the This is just for everybody's information, those entities in the box there are similar size of county, and this is showing the employees per ten thousand. So, you know, everything we're looking at is, are we overstaffed for the services that we're providing? And obviously, if you look at Daggett County, theirs looks like they have hundreds and hundreds of employees, but really they have a thousand, somewhere around a thousand to fifteen hundred residents, and so it's, and, but they have to provide the same services, so they have a sheriff and maybe a deputy with a few road guys. So the numbers can be skewed a little bit because of this graph, so I, this is just purely informational about how many employees we have per hundred thousand. We're at just over two hundred, how many employees do we have?
Just over two hundred.
Just over two hundred, for the twenty thousand residents that we have are nineteen This is showing the tax rate compared to all of the counties in the state and counties in our class. Carbon County, we're by far not the lowest, but we're not the highest either. Emery County is leading, well, no, Sevier County is the highest, with Emery County slightly behind them. As far as total rate, who's paying, or how much they're paying? This is showing how much taxes are collected by each county, by class of county. Obviously, Utah, Salt Lake, Davis, larger counties are collecting a larger portion of taxes. Carbon County, in our size class of county, we're fitting somewhere in the middle with collecting the five million in property taxes and the three hundred thousand in assessing or in the municipal services fund. So we're somewhere in the middle as far as what we provide and how much we collect. This is a very telling slide. This is the money that comes into the Carbon County Recreation Transportation Special Service District. That is a separate entity, and these are the monies that come from mineral lease. And you can see the years that we've had lots of money, that they have had lots of money, and how much it's decreased. They're budgeting, they budgeted about three million this year, and they, we're going to, it looks like we're going to receive that three million dollars, which is good for the county because they pay some of the, they pass a lot of that money to the county in the form of contracts and buying equipment for the county. This slide here shows- This slide here shows the decrease in revenues. This is the money that actually came to the county in the form of the special service district, royalties that the county owns are in red, and exchange lands, the exchange lands are all of the Utah, the SITLA-owned properties that were transferred into Carbon County through the drunkards-wash lease. A- as you look at those, there was a significant amount of money through multiple years, in, each one of those, that came to the county, that offset our budgets and allowed us to have some flexibility. And again, in seventeen, it's the special service district that, through county contracts and, and different things, are, are continuing to pay right around, or just under three million dollars, to help offset our budgets. And that's, that was just the second slide.
So, the municipal services fund is Fund Twenty in our budget, and while I wanted to go through just very quickly and show where this disparity is, when we collect three hundred thousand, which is the top line in the revenue with the property tax, these other items come into, into play as far as making up what that fund really receives. And so, you can see the sales tax, the transportation taxes tied to the, the gas-type tax, building permits, motor vehicle taxes, our class B roads, again, is, uh, monies from the state, and the average ambulance fees that we collect. I might add that ambulance is part of our Fund Ten, and also, when we go over to the other side, our sheriff's department and sheriff's services are our Fund Ten, but those are services that we provide as far as law enforcement and so forth in the unincorporated county. So, as you look at the expenses there, you can see where those budgets have been, after we amended the budget in two thousand seventeen, and the bottom line, you can see, is eight million four hundred and twenty-two thousand, with a revenue stream of four million four hundred and sixty thousand. Part of the specific requirements for the commission in our budgeting process is to provide that health, life, safety, and protection. And so, as you look at all of those items, we're paying the fire departments two hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year to cover fire coverage out into the county. Of course, animal control also has helped with some of the cities, but our big budgets really are the sheriff's department, which does not include the jail, and the highway, and the highway services that go there. So, that's just a, a summary of, of why this is even being proposed by Seth, is that, as Commissioner Hope's has pointed out, those extra millions of dollars that the service district used to provide the county for, with, that offset this need, has now caught us as far as this economy. And while I'm, you know, don't want to paint gloom and doom, I'm very hopeful, you know, that our future will go forward. It's not, it's not new to the county to have these kind of dips, but when you really take into effect the war on coal and the issues that we've had over the last eight years, we have a serious revenue issue as far as that goes. The last slide that I wanted to just show is, is what, this is only one of many things that we have been working on over the last two, nearly three years. And this is a summary of employees in the county. And so, in two thousand seventeen, you can see there's a hundred and seventy-eight full-time, ninety-three part-time, five that are seasonal, and zero that are temporary. That is, a lot of that's come through a natural attrition, and becoming more, more effective in the use of employees, and simply not hiring and replacing, as we've had people leave. And we, you know, the, they, our employees are the most valuable resource we have. Yes, we have to provide them with the materials to get their jobs done, but basically, with the kind of shortfall that we're looking at, again, my question will be, is, you know, what services are we willing to pay for, what are necessary, and, you know, again, how do we pay for them? Because we really start talking about programs, and we start talking about personnel when we have this kind of a discussion. So, with that, that's just a, a taste, perhaps, of what we need to accomplish with a truth in taxation hearing. I would invite everyone here, and those that are viewing this in any other format, to please put those dates on your calendars, as far as the eighth and the thirteenth. We'll do those in the evening, so that we're accessible. We've invited other elected officials, and we'll have other people there that can help answer some of these questions, as far as, you know, what do we, what services do we provide, but we'd like to have this be a healthy conversation going forward. Have anything else you'd like to add, Commissioner Hope's?
Just that, we're, we're looking in, in all corners, we're looking at our health benefits, we're, we're, we're looking at everything we can to reduce the numbers that, that have been proposed, so that we can be as efficient and, with, with the tax dollars that we receive, to provide the services that ultimately the citizens want to pay for, that we, as a community, want to pay for. If there are any suggestions, as you, as you look at what we offer as a county, we've taken multiple suggestions and implemented them, so we're, we're open to suggestions from, from the public. We like the hiring freeze, looking at our benefits, we're, we're, we're looking at all those suggestions. So, if you have suggestions, please email them to us, call us, set up an appointment, however you'd like to get ahold of us, and, and let's have those conversations, and we'll see what we can implement.
May, maybe one other thing that I would add, and again, because this does broadcast live, is that there isn't a week that goes by that I'm not asked of why the county is building another courthouse down on Main Street. And I'd like to address that just very, very quickly, in the fact that that is a state facility being paid for by the state of Utah. The county was fortunate enough that we were able to keep the district court here, and the jobs associated with it, but also the fact that, in, we also negotiated with that building, that yes, we became the funding source upfront to have that work done, so that the, the building, when it's ultimately paid for, in that twenty years down the road, is still a county building. But over that period of time, the state of Utah is making the annual payments on it, in the form of lease, and also maintenance and improvements to keep the building new along with that. So, it is a zero-tax-dollar effect to the citizens of Carbon County. Carbon County will own the building, just like we own the, the old building behind it, which will be occupied with rent. And so, we look at that as a great opportunity, in, in what was negotiated, to create a cash-flow stream into the future, instead of just the state of Utah stepping in, building the building, and then, again, we would pay rents or anything else that we might need to use in that building. So, that is definitely one. The other one, talking about the employees, I don't know how many times I've been approached, that the commissioners have given themselves a raise, and that it's buried in the budget. I can tell you this, I'm in my seventh year of service, I make a little bit more than I did seven years ago, which was a part-time salary for a part-time position, of which now I'm still a part-time salary in basically a full-time position. So, I'm willing to have those discussions with anybody also, and, and I'm not pleading poverty, I'm not pleading as being picked on in any way, but it really does, you know, bother me that that would even be suggested, that we would attempt to do that as a commission in any way, shape, or form. And those are the kind of discussions and questions that I'm more than happy to answer as we go forward in this, but let's have an honest dialogue, and let's not just assume things that are not true.
I guess for dispelling rumors, the, the other rumor that I've heard a lot of is that once an elected official at the county receives four years of service, they get benefits for life. I'm here to tell you that's a lie? It's not true. We're, we're the same as any other state or county employee, once we leave the county, or retire, or we no longer get reelected, our benefits go away. The only thing that we would retain is whatever state retirement we, we have put into as an employee of the county or the state.
Anything else you'd like to add, Commissioner?
Nope. It's been fun.
You, you can tell this weighs heavy, and it, and it should, on all of us, not only as elected officials and, and community servants, but also as individuals who live and love this community. So, we'll take a motion to adjourn, and?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
We're adjourned. Thank you.